This conference will now be recorded.
We certainly ask your guidance as we go through the polls for our government, leaders in the annual state and local, if we have the best representation to protect our democratic republic for which so many have fought, died, and been injured, to raise and preserve it for whatever it occurs. And for ourselves, we ask your direction for us and our constituents as we leave this chamber tonight, and then when we can all meet again, this is a prayer in the name of your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. We are the United States of America and huge republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason, the roll call please.
Layman, here. Holden, here. Dawson, here. Barrett, here. President Jones, here. Johnson, here. White, here.
Now, we have two. I have a public hearing for voluntary annexation petitions, one for Capital Carpet Route LLC and Zachary, Isoda and Todd, Isoda. So, if anyone that wants to have a conversation with justice, please come to podium, state for name, address. Anybody have any comments?
Your Honor, hearing done, I propose to record the session.
Okay. Second. All clear? Thank you. Now, we have several service awards tonight. We have Chief Carroll is here to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm seeing I have Greg Smith, he's the captain of today's department. As of the 25th of October, 1995, Greg comes in and sentenced that October 25th of this year, completed 25 years with the department. He's progressed from the ranks of additional firefighter to current rank of bachelor, and highly speaks more than the rank as he's very well respected by his peers in the cover presenting power department. He's looked upon as one of the unofficial leaders of the department, sometimes only if he has more core legacy. I'm not sure if that, like the fire service alone, or something, Greg comes on as a firefighter, the second generation, his father was a fire chief in the month for a number of years, and Greg's son is a firefighter in the Kansas City metro area. He's married, his wife Stacy is here with us this evening, they have four children, Toby, Axel, Mike, the arrogant, and five grandchildren. So, great, congratulations, Sergeant Craig, we have been in the public.
Chief Ford, there's a retirement and a service. Chief Ford?
Actually, we have three tonight. Do you have any answer, if you'd come on? Suffering from low sleep deprivation, so I'm going to read them, make sure they're clear. The owner was hired in October 10th, 2010, and is a vital part of our communication staff. She is a constant and consistent, very compassionate employee. You can see her here on her days off, covering shifts, ensuring that officers always get to where they need to be, and also simply reaching out to our sick folks. She is also a current field training officer for our newest dispatchers. Thank you for continued service to our department and our community. Congratulations on 10 years of service.
Sergeant Helwood was hired at 10-3 of 2010, and then taking long to figure out that Michael will be involved in all aspects of our police department. He was the 2013 Officer of the Year, he's a current field training officer, warrant entry team member, an FOP officer, and just two years ago, he was promoted, on October 30th, he was promoted to Sergeant. He has not stopped and will not stop learning and be involved in our department. He is slated to be one of our newest background investigators for our new recruits. We are excited to see where he will go in the future. So, congratulations, Mike Horn, 10 years of service.
Well, something wrote, but also, many, many years ago, when I first started as a reserve, I would come and hide with John, so I've known John my entire career. And John began his career with the State Police Department as a reserve officer, October 27th of 1996. He became a full-time officer just a few months later, on November 5th. John is known for his latent back, happy-go-lucky demeanor, and infectious laughter. Anybody that works at the police department will end up giggling along with John just because it is so fun to be around. You always know when John is in a room. He is always willing to help out when and where ever he needed without complaint. He is a dedicated and solid officer. You, my friend, will be missed. Our door is always open to you, and we wish you much success in the next chapter of your life. On behalf of the city today and the State Police Department, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
So, we need approval for Senate with the council meeting. All clear? Close, and then also for special council meeting, October 21st. All clear? Police force, Chairman Jeff Leyman.
Your Honor, I have three items this evening. The first rule to begin with, as we've started our last time, that as we go forward towards our budget process, we have a speech of kind session, and tonight's going to be on water and wastewater brought to us by the state government for special officers. Save these years.
And Bob Summers with Alliance Water Resources from Wastewater is also here tonight, in case I forget something important. There is a presentation, and inside the coffee, I know we'll get it out to you. I try to cover a lot in a little bit of time, so if I forget something important, it's on the slide, so it's. So, what we do doesn't change much in water and wastewater through the years. We maintain the operating permit with Department Natural Resources, and we provide drinking water to our customers. Last year, we provided 1.0, just about 1.2 billion gallons of water to the community. It is all groundwater. I know there's always lots of discussion about whether we still use Springport Lake for drinking water, and we do not. It is all pumped water from the ground. We do staple and conduct lots of tests, especially to quality of water, mostly related to that permit, and keep the unit expanding within Department Natural Resources. We distribute water through roughly 159 miles of water pipe within the community, and extend outside the community in some cases, and to Public Water Supply District Number One, Johnson's, Cleveland, Tennesse County. We maintained all the visitor stations, the two storage tanks and towers, and roughly 10,400 meters to the customers of the community and the south. We did watering and service line, fire services for new residential and business customers, and one big crew is totally devoted at this time to doing nothing but new residential projects and those commercial centers also. We have a total of 19 physicians, our operations manager physician is currently vacant, and we have one operative physician vacant in the water department. We also, I've been watching Facebook, we've had lots of questions about why do we see the picture on the left, two fire hydrants close together. Most of those hydrants look very good, open function, they try to connect to you, they are not. So, we are replacing fire hydrants, the one on the left is over 50 years old, but it looks like it's in pretty good shape. And so, you're a firefighter, you try to connect to it, and then you find out it's not working so well. So, our $13 million project will see over 150 of those hydrants replaced.
So, we're going to leave the old ones for the dog in the neighborhood?
What's that telling it, when they have dogs with the new ones? So, our goal is always to increase water pressure, especially in residential areas. In 2021, we've been busy. 2018 water system improvement phase one, the downtown area is complete, and we're now working on sidewalk. Broadway is complete, phase two, 13th Street, we have the water flow to the hospital is complete, we do have some sidewalk work there to finish. The 2010 water system improvement phase three, the pad up and sitting on the shelf for eight years, is now complete. 2018 water systems improvement phase three kicked off in mid-September. 10th Street is two blocks from being complete, and we've got about six blocks of service lines, and then 10th Street will be complete. If you've been down engineer, that field plate will be gone next week. I've been monitoring that one. Let's see, 15th Street started last week, and it will extend from engineer to being ready. We can leave. Now, we made 18 water systems improvements, phase four, that's the east side of downtown, basically, from Ohio East, on Road 457, picks up a lot yet, Montgomery Avenue and Hill Street, as well as a line extending under the Union Pacific Railroad to the first tie in 50 years. We will have new water lines in portions to Delia, and those all kick off beginning November 9th on Contract One, and Contract Two begins December 2nd. The November 9th contract is for large line, 12 inches and above, and Contract Two is for smaller, eight, 10-inch lines. We will see new water lines installed, it should go out December, for West 3rd Street from Quincy to South limit, to move water service to the community center, and on South Moore and Avenue between 16th and 20th, where we're experiencing an excessively high number of breaks in the last three months. We have significantly reduced this year the number of open water cuts that you see in roadways. I had been able to tell you we were down to two weeks to turn around, but in the last three months, we're back up to around four weeks, but that's because we have so much work going on, we're even having trouble keeping enough people working to get all those road cuts repaired. So, water's improving, and we're going to keep working on how fast we get road cuts repaired.
Do you want one that goes from the street to sidewalks like we have here?
Yes. All of them. All of them will, where there is sufficient right-of-way space available, we are running into some problems, Montgomery Street and 3rd Street, eastbound, we have no availability of right-of-way, so those will be under the road. So, to determine what we need to repair the material list, filtration plant is one of our goals for next year. We've been having discussions with the elevator company that works here in this building, because we have not had that list certified for some period of time. We also need to right-size the equipment, we did discover a fail. The water department was not familiar with downsizeing their equipment based on some of the narrow alleys and right-of-way, and last year, we bought a mini excavator, and they found out how well that works, and now we're going to work on getting them skids here for next year to replace them with their larger equipment. The other thing that we continue to work on, because we have had some staff turnover, is working with the fire department to get all the hydrants flushed within a 12-month period for their IASL rating, and we are working on that, and as part of our master planning effort, we are doing some flow analysis and some hydrant testing. We did find a requirement that the water department was not aware of last year, and that's Americans Water Infrastructure Act requirement for risk assessment and development of an emergency response plan, has specific deadlines in it for June 30th, 2021, for the risk and resilience assessment, and December 31st, 2021, for the emergency response plan. So, we are holding back then with our master planning efforts. And then with master plans, we're excited, we had our first large conference call today about setting up hydrant testing and flow monitoring to determine other areas in the system where we can make improvements, and that will start as soon as Wednesday. Ernst Mack will be in town, starting to do some of that on-the-ground work to try and use up this week's good weather. We are developing other field testing plans to calibrate the models that will allow us to analyze in the future where we can easily grow and where we need to have concentrated effort toward capital improvement and where water needs to break in most of the great hungry. We'll also get a raw water or water supply analysis, do we have enough water for certain type of business to be attracted here, and we, there are needs. The plan will also help with that, and we'll be looking at water demand projections, where are we going in the future, are we going to continue to grow our existing business and residential areas with water that has supplied in this area. Let's see. Evaluate our water filtration plant condition. I kind of laughed at that one, because I asked our water department staff, who moved over to public works about two years ago, I said, "How old is the plant?" And they said, "Well, which part are you talking about?" And I said, "Well, let's start with the old ones," and, you know, they were quick to, and proudly showed me some components that have been around since 1900. They're still operating, they're still in good shape. Age does not necessarily mean bad in the water filtration, but it does make you kind of raise your eyebrows. Pumps, not so much. We'll be talking a lot more about pumps as we move forward on this. Filtration plant condition analysis, we will develop a master plan, we will bring it back to you, and it will set us on a path forward that will allow us to set rates based on our need, because it clearly just goes to people, why we either need to hold rates fairly steady, or see some increase, hopefully for a short period of time, also if it is replaced, and then return to another level in the future. So, that's where we're headed with water for this year, and I know I rushed, so I covered a lot of ground, if you don't have any questions about the water department.
Is there a date yet when we'll have all the water? I see yet. That's a good question, man.
So, Brenda's response, I was waiting for Telvin to smile at me and have me see that part, my response is, we are never finished. We are constantly monitoring and looking for areas that we can improve.
Yeah, and you, yeah, you really never do get finished, because you're, you know, the old pipes are always covered out, and so you want to get them spread out to where you can manage that effectively, and Brenda and I talked about this, and part of the difficulties that we're dealing with is in the past, they didn't replace them as fast as we needed to, so then we had this big project that we were having to do that's $13 million all at once. What we would prefer is, is we do a couple million every year, as opposed to doing that all at once.
So, but I have a question on the filtration plant. Really, the filtration plant, what it does is minimal relative to what we've done in the past, right? I mean, we're obviously, our wells throughout the system, and they're chlorinated at the end, well, I'd like.
We have four wells that provide chlorination. Those wells are only brought online when the plant is not sufficient to meet the needs of the community. They come out most frequently during periods of dry weather, and zero-stake areas, it's quite good water, and we're always pumping during that period.
So, what, oh, the wellheads around the plant are chlorinated at the filtration plants, like?
That's correct.
On the previous slide, you mentioned how FNAK involves tasks back in October, but what does that entail for public works, and what do we do?
No, no.
The previous slide, it was American law.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so what are the reasons for that, what does that entail of?
Risk and resilience assessment, it's truly, we were noticed today that a large metropolitan utility was hit with a ransomware malware. I didn't get through all of it yet, but what I will tell you is, one area, hard to believe, you know, I like to be the person that you guys never see my stuff, till your toilet doesn't flush or your water doesn't flow, because if I'm doing my job, you shouldn't see me, or you shouldn't see my staff, that's right? Unfortunately, what we do, everybody uses, and it's something that terrorists like to get, because it strikes at your common ground, your common thread. So, part of what this act does is it requires us to look at our SCADA system, that calls us if we have a plant failure or a pump going out. That opens up, because frequently that's across the internet or some phone, you know, that's up to exposure. So, now they're telling us it's time we figured out how to lock that on hand. That's what this is going to do.
And protect to make sure nothing gets put in its way.
Yes. I wasn't going, wasn't going there, but yes, and we have to protect also our storage facilities.
We're in pretty good shape from the standpoint, if we lose power, most of the, all the wellheads have a backup generator system, or the plant has a backup generator.
Yeah, lots of power, you know, unless we have, knock on wood, a tornado, which could take out our backup power, we're in pretty good shape. In most cases, if it's just backup power that it takes out, we also have an agreement following that would end some, you know, as long as it's not a mass event across the country, they will provide us mobile supply within a very limited number of hours.
Plus, you have the water power that'll supply for a while.
For a while, yeah. You're right, so, and I was, you know, backup power, see where I've got half, comes out when the system, the stream loses water, we don't have a stock of the storage facility for that.
Brenda, you mentioned about the rapidity of firefighters. Would you also show up? What was it?
We have about 2,400 firefighters in the city. Now, many of those, when I say that, are new, and a lot of those are on private systems at a manufacturing facility. But if you talk about residential, they were moved that are old, when this project is complete, we'll have quite a number of hydrants that were in ditch repair, that was a good service. I like it when the fire folks at the end of the shift, and we snap a picture, and say, "This didn't work." Right? They're noticing a difference already, so it's a good thing it's happening. Okay, Kelvin, I don't know how to go. So, now we're going to switch direction a little bit. So, after we use the water, we have to dispose of it. So, last year, we processed 2.1 billion gallons of wastewater. This year so far, we've processed 1.6 billion gallons of wastewater, and if you notice, we process more water than we produce. How does that happen? That's the inflow and infiltration that we're always talking to you about, so it comes from people's damp spots that are still connected into the wastewater system, or just bad lines in town, so we're constantly looking for updates in flow and infiltration. We do maintain three wastewater treatment plants, a compost facility where we take all the sludge, and we make biosolid compost. There are 187 miles of sewer collection line, most of those are gravity, but there are some forced maybe in town. We have 2,275 manholes and 16 respirations. Lots of infrastructure. We operate a pre-treatment program required by USCCA, and we currently permit six industries in town, we have five that we're working through the permit process. We currently monitor 71 restaurants, 66 auto-mobility shops, two car washes, and 17 dent offices, and we're required to inspect those at least once. We comply with federal and state national discharges elimination system permit requirement, and we are currently in a process of cycle, they were submitted roughly 30 days ago, and we're waiting for a response to our initial submission. And we also are responsible for the use of separate storage super permit, and for monitoring all city facilities and our compliance with that permit. And again, we have 20 staff in total, plus two people with alliance, and Bob Summers is our operations manager, and we do have access to a professional engineer to assist if we have an emergency breakdown during off-hours. So, again, our goal is to meet the service needs of our customers and the environmental compliance requirements of the Department of Natural Resources, both now and into the future, at affordable rates through sound business and financial management. So, we do try to ensure that our wastewater system is compliant, meets those environmental permits issued by the Department of Natural Resources. In the last year, we have had some explorations on copper at the north plant, and we did advise DNR at the time they issued that permit, that we did not believe that we can meet those requirements with the existing plant. So, we notified them in the beginning that we thought we would have problems with that, and that is why we are currently doing the metals translator study that you approved in two meetings ago. We are developing and implementing a staff plan to maximize effective use of resources provided for an aged wastewater system during a period of industrial and residential growth within the community, and we're doing that by implementing an integrated master planning initiative that we were good enough to fund, and that we believe will lead a community for the next 10 to 20 years, within the resources available, and stay in compliance with DNR. Been busy here in wastewater also. We did submit our operating permit sometime, we did submit our pre-treatment program compliance update, and they did submit a response about 5:00 today to our pre-treatment filing, and they haven't made any comments on that. We are working on series-based pipe under Horstman School, and it's another problem, section of pipe, at the end of that project, we will have lined 4,116 linear seats of pipe, so about four fifths of a mile of pipe we've aligned this year. This is a good thing. That helps in flow infiltration.
What does care which? What does that care which?
It means you take a pipe that may have had problems, and you put in a material, and it is heated and air is going through, and it creates a new pipe on the inside of the existing pipe. Especially, for example, the lines that go under the schools, we would have to make it a problem, we would have to re-raid the pipe completely around the school, because frequently they're diagonally under the schools, or whatever.
Going under Broadway and limit too, that makes a huge difference, so that we don't have to trench across those and close those roads down, so.
The pipes that we are doing. The pipes that we are doing, when we calculate the cost, could actually save money. Tree management, root control is complete for this year. And then we do have a tree management grinding program that is complete for this year. As far as our spending, we grind the tree waste, guard waste, that comes in from the community and do fitting our compost process. However, we're giving a lot of out-of-town waste. So, part of what we're looking at is beginning in April, we'll be looking at A, B, sufficient to cover the cost of grinding if you're from out of town. Stormwater project for this year is on South Park and West Fourth Street and is around with four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar project. And what's currently getting, is engineered by Wilson and Company, the city's consultant. We're engineering. We are well into the central regional pellet drive list station rehabilitation we're going. And we are working with Mr. Chapman on using across his property for the central regional list station. He is very open to working with the city. He's been a good partner for this project. But we have, we see the cost estimate for the engineer that is significantly higher than what our preliminary engineer's estimate was. And we're working with him to try and get that cost estimate back, at least within a manageable level. Main Street list station is currently rehab. That's the one at three thousand West Main sits at the base of the central wastewater treatment plant. And they have conducted a field assessment and we're having our first phone call conference on. The RFQ for central plant upgrade is in process. The solid waste management district grant for the compodding to rebuild the stream is complete. And our process water plant is on order. Has it come in, Bob?
No.
Okay. And the two mixers have been replaced with the southeast plant. We did have a DNR inspection of the North Plant and it is complete and maybe some are still in progress. So, our big goal for next year is our master plan and the determination of the best location for replacement of the North Plant. We're collecting a lot of data. We're doing flow analysis. We're going to look at terrain analysis again. We're doing office fields inspections and assessment of critical infrastructure. So, we'll be looking at pipes and manholes. You'll see people out going through the list stations that we aren't currently already rehabilitating. We'll be collecting flow and rainfall data to try and figure out where the worst of the IMI is coming from, the inflow and infiltration. And then we will be putting plans together on replacement and estimated cost. And that plan will be laid out for five years, ten years, twenty, and then forty. So, it will be a long range and all encompassing plan for both water and wastewater. Two milestones, software selection this month, flow monitoring through the winter of two thousand twenty. We'll do, and that has some specific locations that have been previously identified. We'll do the city line in spring because we get the most water in the spring. Flow projections will be done for master plan in spring twenty twenty-one. The design criteria and standards development will be completed in the summer. The path for the assessment, we have a type in the ground for every one material in the community and for any increased flow from industrials or potential growth from the rail industrial part is likely to come and where the space gets placed to find use in the future. That all comes from this plan. So, the final plan will hopefully be developed by the winter of twenty twenty-one including the first look at the full copper. That will allow us to do on the fly projections. With the planning, respond to the DNR's comments on all our submissions. Work on the master plan and hydraulic modeling. We've been designing construction on the various capital improvements we've got underway. We'll be slip lining a brick to remain behind Main Street from Kentucky to Ohio and hopefully next year from Ohio to L.A. We'll again be looking at tree management, the root controls, keep the mains flowing. And tree management branding, hoping to build a high store in this one. And we'll be working to get that stormwater project finished. And then we will be again evaluating power backup and balance of the lift stations on wastewater side. On my water, we do not have backup generator or some old plants are the lift stations. Some of those we have to move mobile pump between, which works with smaller lift stations during the power outage without bypassing, am I correct?
Yes.
Uh, we will be installing new manholes, regarding existing manholes. And we'll be recruiting volunteers to come storm drain markings. And we want some new designs for that soon, including more people. And the last photo there is a photo of what comes out of our plant after it's been treated. So, it's pretty clear. Any questions on wastewater?
I would add, excuse me, I, I would add that we are also, in, in the case of wastewater as well, we're playing a little bit of catch-up. We did not want to increase fees all at once, so we've been trying over the last several years trying to increase free fees gradually. We're getting closer, but we're still not there. And, and what that does is it limits our ability to keep the plants in good repair and the, and the sewer lines in good repair and replacing those that go out. Now, I will say over the last couple of years, at least, we're getting better. We're, we're not, uh, we're not dealing with emergencies every other day. It's maybe once a week or so, but, uh, no, it's seriously, it's, uh, it's gotten a lot better as far as the, uh, the emergency repairs that we've had. This year, though, we've had a lot of top failures, so we need to, we need to focus on that and we need to keep that gradual, uh, look going forward as opposed to emergency planning. You know what I mean?
The reality is that's, uh, it's gonna cost more and more every year to treat that water.
The reality is it costs a lot more to treat wastewater than it does to produce the drink.
So, we're gonna be faced with that, again, from the gas again and, yeah, the fee structure.
Yeah.
And the reality.
And my opinion, we don't want huge increases all at once. We wanna do those increases gradual so that the money's there when we need it, kind of.
I think, I think I certainly appreciate that, uh, some cities have been really, they're very hard. And we're fortunate we've been able to work with DNR. And I don't, I think it's their personality that makes it work.
My own home.
Hi, Allison. I think last year is good, so it's, uh, Horson School has a, made a sewer line, ran wide into that school.
And we repaired that one when we went to the, we did. Uh, that was one of the chief schools that we did repair and placed pipe under last year.
Our, so they, they have to do a little, they give everybody this, thirty-nine, good, oh, five, all is good, okay?
They actually, they go in and they clean and then they go in and they line it and we use very little capacity each time.
Okay.
Your honor, in your operating treatment program, you, like, said everyone has cars and things like that. Why even do the, bring up, uh, dental offices, just kind of?
Sorry?
Then, it's the C, have that called out.
Uh, whether or not, they recently put installation laws specific to dentists because of silver amount, which is a toxic in the wastewater.
Good job, babe. Your partner back there did a great job there.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Really, would you be so kind to be forward that? Thank you. Your honor, nice job. Your honor, the second part that I have for this evening has to do with the public hearing that is bad. It has to do with the annexations of the following properties. And if you would look at our agenda, there are actually several ordinances under this that we'll have to go through. I guess, who would I refer this to?
Five ordinances?
Yeah, we have five ordinances.
Yeah. And if you remember during the, uh, during the public hearing, the homeowners association had some questions. Uh, I tried to address those in the at administration memo. Um, most all of them have been addressed now and, uh, uh, we're, but we're still working on a couple of them. One is the, the groundwater. We're still trying to figure that out. And I do not know if they, if the county got the road assessed or not. But, uh, be happy to answer any questions or go over any of those issues.
The council, have any questions about these five ordinances? Are there any questions in regards to the answers that you saw to the questions that came under any original here? That being said, your honor, I'll call for the ordinances.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine three. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Diane Beavers, known as Lot Nine, the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Second reading, second.
One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine three. Ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Diane Beavers, known as Lot Nine, the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Final passage, please.
One call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine four. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Thomas W. and Linda K. Ross, John B. and Emily T. Holman, Clyde Lynn Schormer, and Shawnee and Lori and Janice B. Morgan. Owners property known as Lot Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Second reading, second.
One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine four. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Thomas W. and Linda K. Ross, John B. and Emily T. Holman, Clyde Lynn Schormer, and Shawnee and Lori and Janice B. Morgan. Owners property known as Lot Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Final passage, second.
One call, please.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine five. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Christopher and Maggie Ofer, current property to Ray LLC and B. Holman LLC. Owners property known as Lot Fourteen, Fifteen, Thirteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Second reading.
One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine five. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by Christopher and Maggie Ofer, current property to Ray LLC and B. Holman LLC. Owners property known as Lot Fourteen, Fifteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Final passage.
One call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine six. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by the Gables Homeowners Association Incorporated, Diamond Construction LLC, Jared M. Pearl, Robert Page and Lieutenant J. Walter, Robert G. and Johnny E. Step, B. Holman LLC, Christopher and Allo Wayne, Michael Lindler, DAS Construction LLC, owners property known as Scratch and Drive, the Gables Phase One and lots along through eight, nineteen and twenty of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Second reading.
Second. One favor, uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine six. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by the Gables Homeowners Association Incorporated, Diamond Construction LLC, Jared M. Pearl, Robert Page and Lieutenant J. Walter, Robert G. and Johnny E. Step, B. Holman LLC, Christopher and Allo Wayne, Michael Lindler and DAS Construction LLC. Owners property known as Scratch and Drive, the Gables Phase One and lots along through eight, nineteen and twenty of the Gables Phase One subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Final passage, second.
One call, please.
Bobby?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine seven. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by the Gables Homeowners Association Incorporated, the property known as the Gables Phase Two subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Second reading.
Second. One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine seven. An ordinance approving an annexing unincorporated area owned by the Gables Homeowners Association Incorporated, the property known as the Gables Phase Two subdivision of Pettis County into the cities today, Missouri, Jason and contiguous to existing corporate loans associated.
Final passage.
Okay. One call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Kind of the last part I have, number three, is a change of order with the fill party or exclamation contractor that's working with the road server. An amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents. It was discovered as they are working on this that we have some soil out there that is not properly compacting. So, it has to be taken up and replaced. And that will cost the seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents. And for those of you that are familiar with that contract, it does have a contingency fund about it. It's normal for, have a look.
Any council questions? Jason, read your audience, please.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine eight. An ordinance approving an annexing change order by the main cities today, Missouri, fellow Sarty Incorporated for unusable soil work for the rail spur track bed located south of Selene Street on the east side of Norton Hill Street in the cities today, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine eight. An ordinance approving an annexing change order by the main cities today, Missouri, fellow Sarty Incorporated for unusable soil work for the rail spur track bed located south of Selene Street on the east side of Norton Hill Street in the cities today, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. One call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Your honor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. My administration, Chairman Andrew Dawson, please.
First item I have on the agenda is an ordinance calling for the, uh, April sixth, twenty twenty-one general election. Where we'll be, uh, electing one councilperson simply to the four wards.
Any counsel discussion? Jason, will you read your audience, please?
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine nine. An ordinance calling the general election to be held on April sixth, twenty twenty-one with the purpose of electing one councilman for each of the four wards in the cities today, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. One favor.
Uh, propose.
Well, number two thousand twenty dash one nine nine. An ordinance calling the general election to be held on April
An ordinance following the general election to be held on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. For the purpose of electing one councilman for each of the four wards in the city of today, Missouri. Final page.
Second.
No call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Second item is a records destruction request. Personals identified some records that had met their pretending requirements and are asking for approval to destroy those.
They're the ones that did.
Listen to proof.
Yeah.
No favor. Uh, propose.
The third item is relative to the community development structure. So, uh, these two ordinances will take and new, uh, code enforcement out from underneath the umbrella of the community development directors. And place them directly under the, uh, chief building official. And then that chief building official will report directly to the city administrator. And it's also creating a position of, uh, code enforcement supervisor that will be in between the code enforcement officers and the CBO.
Let the council decision. Jason, read your orders, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two one. An ordinance permitting order number nine nine four relating to the community existing classification and job description. The city administrator, community development director, and chief building official. Leaving and missing classification and job description for neighborhood improvement officer. And adding new classifications and job description for code enforcement officer and code enforcement supervisor for the city of today, Missouri. Second reading.
Okay.
No favor. Uh, propose.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two one. An ordinance permitting order number nine nine four relating to the missing classifications and job descriptions. The city administrator, community development director, and chief building official. Leaving and missing classification and job description for neighborhood improvement officer. And adding new classifications and job description for code enforcement officer and code enforcement supervisor for the city of today, Missouri. Final package. Second.
No favor. Uh, no call, please, I'm sorry.
Wyman? I'm going to go stand by and I made that so that you can see the supervisor position from my. Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh one. An ordinance permitting section seven point one five C, control substance alcohol testing policy of accountability. The city of today's personnel regulations manual. Identifying code enforcement officer and code enforcement supervisor in employee positions. A safety sensitive and deleting neighborhood improvement officer. Second reading.
Okay.
No favor.
Okay.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh one. An ordinance permitting section seven point one five C, control substance alcohol testing policy of accountability. The city of today's personnel regulations manual. Identifying code enforcement officer and code enforcement supervisor in employee positions. A safety sensitive and deleting neighborhood improvement officer. Final package.
Second. No call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
The fourth item is two ordinances, uh, relating to the transfer of the municipal court to the APD judicial circuit court. So what was to do is a result of some cost savings, but, uh, more important, in my opinion, it reaffirms the separation between the judicial executive functions.
Let the council decision.
Um, I have another, I have another question. Um, how, how will this change, um, Ann? Do you think more things shift to her than you do this? Or does it all just go?
Yeah.
Does it change, does it, does it make Ann have more things that she's required to do?
I think Ann's work will be to say.
Okay. There will be some changes, mayor. Um, currently, um, the division of courts not decided. Um, the change that will improve this goes to the courthouse. I will need to have to be inside as of June one. So right now we have two, we have one and a half courts that are doing the task of, when I create them a ticket. Um, that I signed to review, they are doing the data entry work to integrate into the court system. If it goes to the courthouse, I will not, you know, know what's going to be that form. I will have to enter to that work. If I get some help, that would be great. Um, but right now I would have to be outside. So that data entry work for approximately. Um, we talked to numbers, uh, last time during, um, the court presentation. Are probably an average ticket or some is probably around eighteen hundred and thirty years. So that's eighteen hundred is the thing that I'm going to have. The ticketing, from what I understand, from chief court is, was originally perhaps, and that's great, a great, going to be great people, all of us. But it's been delayed. Um, it's delayed, I think it was originally scheduled for March, but that was probably in twenty twenty-one. But that has, um, I think COVID has affected that, that project as well, from what I understand. I really don't know when that will be on operation. Um, the location will change like with the court. I have not talked with Judge Kaufman. My, my information is coming from Judge Fear. Um, is that the court would likely not be here till here in town to change personnel, although it's the courthouse. Uh, so that means I get to go up there. I have a place to see my car, you know, I can do that. Um, but because there, there are other pockets of things up there, there's only likely two, two opportunities to act courts. And so right now it's at four, half day, um, four to five, half day on Wednesday, and one Monday afternoon. Um, fortunately, the largest courtroom is Judge Kaufman's.
Oh, I don't, I think, uh, you're mistaken on that, Ann. Uh, I personally have a feeling that Judge Kaufman, the court is going to be heavier.
Like I said, my information is coming from Judge Fear. So I, I didn't have that information.
That's something that Judge Kaufman is, has that responsibility and through the settler and the minister of the, of the courts. And we, we have offered this courtroom and they accept that. And we, we have offered that officer and they accept that. Now for the, for the clerking, it's going to be up to the settler. But I think far as, uh, I, I don't, I, I don't know, I think it's probably a conflict if the clerk is assisting you. Now, we have offered the, the opportunity for the courts, the records people, the police department to assist you. But I know that's big for you.
And, and I, I just don't know all the details for that, mayor. When I talked to Chief War last, last week, he didn't have all the details for that either. The reason that the court clerk is consistently now is because they are not doing these plans. I just present them with a charming package and then they then accept it or not. Um, so.
The only difference is going to be is the circuit court and Susan Sazlo, I take that responsibility. There's a little, little, there's a little bit of history behind this as it's developed way, way back when we did a way of convincing judge position. That actually came under Senate Bill five is how we, that actually came into play. But also we had discussed at that time of this position actually moving. And there were some things that involved Judge Kaufman, if I recall correctly, and anybody that was involved, and I can correct me upon this. But Kaufman had an issue about being able to fill that position at that point in time as we did that quick transition. And also we needed to prove the code code what it was going to cost to do that. So we were looking at a year downstream and we're past that now. And another thing in my mind is if this person doesn't agree with me, we, we report to anybody within our jurisdiction. She reports directly to the judges, we've been told. Then there's no, I don't see why we named under this and we, we wind up with a savings on here for. We have offered the courtroom and the space to them also. My understanding is we're one of the few municipalities, if only, the only municipalities that developed a cycle system. If I recall, back in that timeframe, it was considered a hybrid type system because it took. Somebody at the state level, I can't remember the names, you might remember Ann, how that all came.
I don't remember the name, but there's, there's big statute that allows you to do this back in twenty seventeen. And there's, and there's a big statute that allows you to transfer all of it, um, to the, to the circuit court level. And accepted by the proceeding judges.
Any other council decision?
So are we moving the clerk to, uh, the clerkship stage here?
So, step up to Susan.
Okay, so Susan decides.
Susan Sazlo is, is that, has that clerk responsibility. Any other? Read, read your orders, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh two. An ordinance regarding the municipal court of the city of today, Missouri. Second reading. Second.
No favor.
All right.
Propose.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh two. An ordinance regarding the municipal court of the city of today, Missouri. Final page.
Second.
No call, please.
Holden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh three. An ordinance permitting section sixteen dash two regarding the law offices for corporate costs of the city of today, Missouri. Second reading.
Second. No favor. All right, I propose.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh three. An ordinance permitting section sixteen dash two regarding the municipal corporate costs of the city of today, Missouri. Final package, second.
No call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster? Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
If I may add on the, uh, agenda is the acceptance of the twenty twenty-one health insurance rates. Uh, we have our personnel director Rice here at the Pecos U of Rite Can.
Councilman, we also have Brendan Hurley here from IBG.
He's here with IBG, he's also our agent. We had a significant increase this year in our health insurance rates. It was quite surprising, so we tried to work with them and Loop House and Blue Shield. Uh, also with IBG to try to get these rates down as much as possible. Uh, the best we could kind of come across are the different scenarios. We found out that some of the costs in our, you know, PPO plan basically was driving up some of the other plans. Our PPO is basically a provider organization structure that we had a certain co-page for different things that seemed to be the ones utilized the most. And it becomes very expensive, so we looked into some modifications to that to bring the rates down a little bit. And also out into controller costs, which is going to be at sixteen point eight percent, so it's going to be a very expensive, uh, proposition. You spend about, I think, about one point two million dollars on health insurance right now for employees. So it can be a significant bill. So we looked at a couple scenarios. One, we came across a change in the PPO, which now has a municipal deductible one thousand. Moving up to a fifteen hundred dollar deductible and then also moving the maximum amount of cost for in-network services from four thousand to five thousand dollars. We changed a few of the co-pays on, uh, basically your, uh, your pharmaceuticals. Uh, but that was still a price, you know, increase, uh, even though it's a good plan. And I think it meets up with a lot of the standards in health and parent industry. We kept the PPO one thousand, now it's by five years at present rate. So one way we, what they're doing is fixing the cost. And one of the goals we've had at the city is to try to move people as many as possible to the health savings account. Health savings account is, uh, under our rules, it's been a very, uh, robust plan for our employees that really liked it a lot. We have about two-thirds of our employees on this plan. So we figured that if we selected a plan that we would pay, the city would pay the cost of the HSA. And anything lower than this is what we're suggesting. Uh, basically we would cover the cost of a hundred percent for the, uh, for the city employee. The PPO plan since it is so expensive, we thought, well, we did it a few years ago, at least you have what called a buy-up plan. If you wanted the lower, I mean, if you wanted the PPO plan that we consider this a buy-up plan. And then the employee would actually have contributed a portion to it, uh, which is about thirty-three or thirty-four dollars, uh, on a monthly basis. For the government trips right now, you know, the employee pays nothing. And that's one of the benefits that we have to work with the city and attracting people to the city has been our health insurance and our law reform, which is well. So what I was suggesting is we moved this PPO plan and the rates, uh, moved the deductibles up a little bit. And for those who DJ PPO, it's not everybody can have an HSA. There's certain rules on the IRS that you can't have an HSA. Then they could have still obtained this. Uh, we do have a, a cheaper, uh, PPO plan, which is the three thousand plan, but a lot of people don't want to step up to those kinds of deductibles. We actually designed that plan for more people that have families. And there's some savings for those families by doing the PPO plan, three thousand dollars deductible. So it kind of works out that way to, and that's what we're kind of suggesting, if we get this all together in one package. I kind of calculated in a rough number that we're going to bring our healthcare cost on about six point five percent. There's a little bit of rebate in here, uh, that we get back in, at one time of year on a monthly premium. Kind of an old insurance term that's used, but it works out pretty good. And six point five percent is, we came into the, you know, Loop House and Blue Shield, significant savings from United Healthcare. And because the healthcare costs will kind of give up a little bit of that savings, but we're still within where we were before we went to United Healthcare. So it works out pretty good. And what we're suggesting is we kind of follow this program unless the council wants to do something a little bit differently. And if you have any questions, we've got Brendan here that can address some of the technical issues for what our losses may be. Uh, we have a hundred thousand dollar cap that's, uh, basically on our loss before it's transferred to a pooling. And so up to a hundred thousand dollars, kind of like in this pool, we'll then before this transfer, that's cost to that too. So we've had a few claims that might, one or two claims that might hit that hundred thousand dollar rate. But if we try to manage those the best as possible, HSA account has a little bit more skin in the game for the employee. So they tend to look at the health savings account and because we have a contribution built into that for the employee, we set up actually a banking account for them. Uh, they, they are very conscious of that. And they look for those cost savings where on the PPO plan, they kind of look like, oh, well, it's no big deal, uh, you know, like to what the cost is because I'm not paying it anymore. There's no savings or incentive for the employee to use it. The health savings account, I think it is one thing employees really enjoy and they have been using quite a bit of. And that seems to be where we're driving our cost towards. So that's where we're, any suggestions, questions I might be able to answer against our health insurance?
I've got one for Ben. Maybe you know, Loop House and Blue Shield, maybe, I don't know if they're still having, but they used to be, where is this kind of out of? It's a Kansas City or San Marcos, you know, where they still live and stay. It used to be, it was insured, I think the line was roughly around Columbia. It was insured out of there, dealing with certain providers. Now they have a part of it called a blue card system, so all of the campus, Loop House networks across the nation and the world, really. Um, they're networks are connected. So the line you're talking about is right around Bloomville, Columbia, when you turn to the campus of Missouri. And, but if you have Loop Rock, Loop Hill card in the city, you can access any of the providers in those networks. So to give you an example, we once had a, a physician, probably was doing some mission work with patients. And we were, you know, he's going to be there for a month, one of the other providers were over there and we were able to hold all patients for the rest of the year in the city. So it's a worldwide network, even though the groups, they, they act more on franchise versus United Healthcare, which is just United Healthcare. So there's a lot of things on there. But then any networks inside those, yes.
There's not any complaints with anybody turned down for insurance. You know, Loop House and Blue Shield, like we have a lot of people, Team Rock, which is formed by Kansas City and St. Louis and everywhere.
Since, it's the local loss that we.
I would point out too, that, uh, IBG, IBG on our behalf, uh, searched also the market and got a quote from, uh, United Healthcare. And it was not competitive even with the increased plan. So, uh, so this really is the, the best option for us. It's not, uh, you know, not, not really where we want, but it's, it's where we need to be for cost containment. And, um, you know, from, from that regard, from my perspective, you know, you're always dealing with finite amount of money. So the more that we do, you know, or the more the benefits cost, the more, the less we got to give in wages. So it's that fine line there that we're, we're always trying to balance, uh, you know. And as, as Mr. Rice pointed out, you know, that it is an important recruiting tool for us, but, uh, so is wages. So we've, we've got to hit that balance somewhere, so.
One of the things we've worked with John and Kelvin, we really take this and, and move it to kind of a structure that incentivizes, like John's saying. Employees to have a little more skin in the game, choose a plan that makes more sense. Then first give it away to the bank, um, with the most, the plans that had the highest richness, uh, getting that away for free. So, um, structure wise, we're hoping we're going to eliminate some of the, you know, some of the high claims activities. Not eliminate it, but restructure it in a way that will make the claims ratio lower.
Do you have any dependents involved in the health savings account?
Yes, we do. Um, I'm not sure exactly how many dependents I have on it. Uh, some of our family go towards when, uh, Kelvin and I looked at this a couple of years ago, that we didn't have very many dependents on our plan. So that's when we brought in the PPO three thousand plan and HSA five thousand. I don't have any by an HSA five thousand. But the PPO three thousand is actually a plan that, uh, those with families, they don't gravitate towards the HSA. They'll gravitate towards the PPO three thousand because it has some benefits. You don't go to the emergency room a lot and you just see your local doctor and a few pharmaceuticals. It has a, uh, it's basically a cheaper plan to have because the deductible is higher. But if you go and see like the doctor, it doesn't cost you anything, the local doctor in network. And these are built for families that may have kids and stuff, that may go to the doctor for sore throat or something like that. And they like to deal with all the co-pay, the pharmaceuticals are a little bit cheaper. And, but it's not a no-use plan because they're very careful by how they use it as opposed to PPO one thousand or about fifteen hundreds. It tends to be, uh, a more rich type of a plan where people use it more.
Yeah. But yeah, it keeps the premium as low as we can for the dependent coverage that's all on the employees. So, you know, it, you know, it's, it's a higher deductible, but at least it's insurance, you know. And they can get the prescription card and the co-pays. So they, it encourages them to at least go to the doctor and get their prescription cards. But, uh, uh, and it's better than, than, uh, the alternative of not having insurance at all, so.
Any other counsel discussion?
Yeah, there's got to be one here. We'll get, trying to get an apology combined with hospital with all the complaints.
Uh, yes, not seriously. Um, the, uh, uh, hospital, as you know, is, it has a high, uh, basically they, they are self-insured. And of course that works well for the hospital because essentially they're, it's left pocket, right pocket, you know. So they're, uh, they're paying themselves on many of those plans. For us, uh, that risk of, uh, of that self-insurance is, is, you know, is, is difficult. But we can certainly take another look at that if we're, uh, if we're willing to take that risk of the, of that self-insurance.
Hey, it's, it's an impact for budget lag.
Well, where do we end up here? What, what do we need for going to have to pay more on pocket next year with your recommendation? If they want to stay on the PPO plan, I have, uh, basically seventy-two people enrolled in the PPO plan. If they want to move towards an HSA, there won't be, you know, any cost increase to them at all. If they want to stay on the PPO plan, it's going to cost them thirty-three dollars a month, thirty-three, thirty-four dollars a month.
And their deductible went up five hundred dollars.
Yeah, the deductible went up. Of course, correspondently, if they have a spouse or child, all those deduct, all those costs go up too. So basically it's kind of incentivizing people to move to the HSA, uh, to kind of help them out. It also fixes the cost to the city. If you know exactly that we're going to pay, you know, this amount of money on each employee. So it's much easier to budget that than it is to try to, and I'm sure Kelvin appreciates that, you know, when he works out all the charts.
That helps, uh, truly the benefit to the employees, to sit down and examine it.
It rolls over every year, if they're quit, retire, whatever, it goes with them. That's their money. So that's one reason they're a little bit careful about how they spend it. They just don't necessarily spend it, but they do get to receive the medical care. All of our plans comply with the, I'm at the Corporate Care Act, which means they'll have the same benefits, all the same discounts. All the shots and stuff that are part of the wellness checks are all free. So basically it's just those things that come from their healthcare, uh, their normal healthcare that actually is what they're paying for.
And I think, I think when we looked at the raw numbers, it was, uh, the PPO plan, the PPO one thousand plan was a hundred and twenty-seven percent loss ratio. If I remember right, and the others were in the eighty to fifty, yeah. So, so that's where the costs are, so that's where we made the changes.
You said you want to be run by eighty-nine percent? All right. In the same high range, yeah. Yeah, certainly extending some utilization rate or something in the high seventies, because if you get too high, then your healthcare costs go up. Anytime you exceed what's called number one, you're definitely going to see a tremendous increase. So a hundred and twenty-seven percent means that, you know, in actual terms, if every dollar is being spent, it's costing you something, a dollar, something seven. Those costs have to be offset somewhere.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second. All right, sir. I propose.
Thank you, Don and Brendan.
So I'll have your.
You don't have any more items? Thomas Olin, please take it.
All right, we have one item for public safety tonight, and it is regards to the central fire station upgrade. Uh, during our strategic planning process, we contracted out an engineering firm to look at our central fire station. The facility is showing its age, but it is structurally sound. We do know that here in the future, with as large as Cincinnati is growing geographically, that it's not a prime location for a fire station. So we'll be looking towards the future for, to really replace one, possibly two good locations, two buildings for our central fire location. During this time though, we do need to make, uh, this building a little bit more livable, a little bit more comfortable for our first responders. And there are a few areas that we would like to tackle. One is the, the bathroom. Uh, it's had, it's kind of out of shit, terrible shape and needs to be gutted and done. Uh, the pipes, the pipes that some, some of them have been completely deteriorated into the walls of course. The second area we'd like to address is the living quarters. Uh, there's not much privacy and it is harder to heat and cool in that area. And the third, the third item is the kitchen area of that. Uh, thanks, thankful to, thankfully, uh, Councilman Boggs, the co-chair of public safety, has worked with some local vendors. Uh, to look at some materials needed and was able to get a discounted price of a lot of that, so thank you, Councilman Boggs. Uh, with that, uh, the major components folks and the added other materials, they came up with a budget of about fifty thousand dollars. So we recommend approval for the budget amendment to make these quarters, quarters livable for the next few years.
Let me add that Councilman Boggs was, was the one individual that took the inventory on this reviving star to our attention. And, uh, I was quite, I would say embarrassed, thinking after I've been in it. Realizing what the condition of the new star fighters are living in. And it's going to be a pretty simple fix, uh, and what I'll be able to do then.
To the newer council members, if you have not toured our location, uh, most certainly the central fire location. I would, I would recommend taking a tour of that because there's a much appreciation towards our first responders as well as becoming buildings that are going to come.
Is this a building, customer, that it's probably going to be torn down at some close future or not? This is a, this is a spending deadline, uh, it's supposed to spend a hundred thousand on rebuilding it all.
Right, right. No, we're, we're making a kind of investment right now, it bothers them.
But you're, you're. Yeah, the engineering study basically said that this facility really doesn't meet the, the current, you know, like the equipment. The, the, uh, bays are not as big as the equipment is today. So over the long run, this facility's not going to be, um, what we want in the, in the long term. Uh, but they did say that it, you know, that it meets our needs now with, uh, with some slight modifications or some, some updates, if you will. But, uh, uh, long term, not only the facility itself is not going to, not going to meet the modern requirements of, you know, for, uh, you know. They also have to separate the, the dirty rooms from the clean rooms that they talk about, all of that. But, uh, over the long term, it's probably not in the right spot for us as we grow. So as we look at the comprehensive plan, we really need to look at as we grow, where are, where should we replace this facility with? And they said more than likely what it's, what it's going to end up is that the right thing to do is replace this facility with two facilities and spread them apart. Um, but this, uh, they said it'd take about a hundred and twenty thousand, if I remember right, to, to update it, to keep it in shape until we got to that point. And, uh, so these, uh, with Councilman Boggs's help and, and doing really all the white work. Uh, finding the, uh, the cabinets and the countertops and the flooring and all of that at a, at a really cheap price. Uh, then, um, we can do that for fifty thousand with our labor, the facility's management. And, uh, on the screen, I just kind of laid out, uh, you know, this room is what we were talking about, is one big room. And it's got single pane windows in it. And they basically were telling us that you, you cannot heat it or cool it to a comfortable level. So, uh, and then it provides really no privacy for the bugs in there. So if the person next to you snores, you're just out of luck, you know. Uh, so what we've designed is, uh, is the, the kind of the gold or the yellow. Uh, is adding these walls to make four, uh, separate rooms. And then the bathroom, as we mentioned, or as, uh, Councilman Oldman, uh, pointed out, is this, uh, that urinal, that's right there. Uh, that one has been taken out of service because they found that, uh, essentially the pipe was deteriorated. And the, the stuff that goes in urinals, um, was just going into the wall and staying there. So it, it really got pretty nasty in there. Uh, the other, uh, restrooms are pretty bad shape, uh, and the privacy panels are in really bad shape. Uh, the sink is in really bad shape. The shower currently is just one big shower with four heads. And, uh, so we're proposing just real cheap, but, uh, but put a privacy panel in between. So that you can have two people take a shower at the same time without getting cozy. Um, there is a, basically a catch-all countertop right here. That is all of their electronics and there's a pole right there. And then the, uh, so the, the table, uh, that they all eat at is right here. So we can take all of this out and it reduces the catch-all and, and all of that. Put it over here and so that opens all of that up into a more open and nice space. So again, very little expense, but makes it much more visible. And then the kitchen over here, uh, Councilman Boggs was able to work with, uh, a local vendor. That, uh, they're giving us a really good price and they designed it and laid it out for us based off of the measurements that, uh, uh, the fire department folks. And, uh, are ecstatic about, uh, what little we can do with, uh, with a little bit of money, so.
Motion for the resolution to amend the budget.
Okay.
All right, sir. I propose.
Motion to officially congratulate you for this one. This first order is as possible.
No, what?
I thought you said, so there. There, organs please. All organs.
I need the original.
Yes. To read the resolution, I meant.
Resolution nineteen fifteen. Resolution, and this council, the city of Cincinnati, the law and the administration's budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Relating to upgrades of the central fire station located in six hundred thousand.
All right. I propose. Now the organs please.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh four. In order to amend the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one regarding upgrades of the central fire station located in six hundred thousand.
All right, sir. I propose.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh four. In order to amend the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one regarding upgrades of the central fire station located in six hundred thousand. Okay.
No call please.
August?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross, yes. Austin?
Yes.
Wyman, yes. Lehman, yes. Oldman, yes. Cross?
Yes.
That's all I have.
You mean a development company, Andrew Dawson?
Uh, one item on the community development agenda, that's right, ordinance accepting the agreement from the city of Cincinnati. Those are Main Street connection. I believe, uh, planner downtown specialist here is here to take a seat. Yeah, well.
Hello, this is the last time you saw me before the council, I was asking you guys permission to apply for it. Um, I've admitted all of the materials and the area was selected. Uh, so now I'm asking people to allow me to accept a grant. Um, so I just need to give you a little bit of a structure of what the test grant is. It's people energized, complete, with the main street motion, uh, wonderful views, it should provide us with, uh. I put service in order, perhaps to twenty-five or next steps, with presenting our downtown. Creating, uh, more board structure, um, more structured and knowing where to do your next. So not only will they provide aid for us to create more boards, uh, more, 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 but also for meetings to deal with economic development in our downtown. Uh, the design, creation and more innovation itself. Um, so through this, we hope to create a really, uh, really great downtown identity. Uh, and going forward, where we want to see our downtown grow and become. And so through this, uh, Newbury Main Street connection will be providing us with fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. With the city's tax of nine thousand six hundred dollars, we're total of twenty-four thousand four hundred. It's pretty substantial and, uh, I reviewed everything, it's going to, uh, uh, Mr. Shaw as well, uh, Mr. Simmons. And we have to turn it on, uh, admit all of our requirements that we want and need to strike through.
Any counsel discussions? Right there. Tell them, okay. Regardance please, Jason.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh five. In order to bring in, subjecting, in, bottomed, please, to these things are, and the pro-main street connection incorporated with professional services with reserve main street program. For revitalization of the downtown area.
Second reading. Second. All right, sir. I propose.
Bill number two thousand twenty dash two oh five. In order to bring in, accepting, the agreement, five hundred, please, to these things are, and the reserve main street connection incorporated with professional services with reserve main street program. For revitalization of the downtown area.
Final passage. No call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross, yes. Austin?
Yes.
Wyman, yes. Lehman, yes. Oldman?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. What are licenses, Jason?
We have one renewal, Justin Gray, giving business of the list, express number five to seventy. Seven hundred three, spotlight, the factors longer and Sunday sense. What do you think?
Okay.
All right, sir. I propose. Anybody from the council, city minister? Nathan, like a gentleman?
Yeah, um, Halloween at the hall, uh, and downtown, I think, uh, went very well. And I don't know what I really expected as far as participation, but, uh, uh, we had quite a few. I don't, I don't know if anybody really knows the number.
I don't I don't know if anybody really knows the number, but, uh, uh, and for the most part, you know, folks were wearing masks and or social distancing. Um, so we, I think, did it fairly safely or as safely as we could and and, uh, got people out and out of their houses and and, uh, I understand there was a the next night, there was a block party that went off pretty well as well, so I.
More more than pretty well.
Yeah.
It was a hit of the hit of the community for sure. Me each and parts of purpose.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, it was incredible.
Yeah. Yeah, I waited in line longer than I wanted to and and gave up, so, I mean, I hope they it went very well too.
Downtown Savannah, uh, I don't know, my wife gets them, they're a thousand people.
I think there were like thirteen hundred kids.
And there's, you know, you could still.
And I ran out of candy in less than an hour.
Oh, yeah.
I stood in the cold for a little while.
Yeah.
We had lunch during that, at the park. Angie and I got out there at four thirty and got down at eight thirty, and they said there was sixteen hundred cars coming through there. I mean, they just lined us all away from sixty-five highway to the park. Down there, she probably didn't engineer, they just kept them.
Yeah.
They turned back to it.
Anybody from the audience like to say a few words, kind words to?
Kind words.
We'll have a motion to.
Motion to adjourn, close door session. Ready.
More call please.
Lehman, here, here. Holden.
I'll be here.
Dawson, yes. Morgan.
Yes.
Richardson. Yeah. Cross.
Yes.
Foster. One. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Brendan. You you tell Bob since he wasn't here, we we denied it. Since Bob wasn't here, we denied it. He said if he didn't care enough.
I'm gonna check one right now. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, thank you. Oh, just right there.
Yeah. Pictures and everything. You you could have spoke to the central fire.
Didn't I give you one?
I did. I did. Okay.
Oh, come on, Brendan. After a past power.
Oh, no, no, no.
Unapparent.
Count a second.
Second.
More call please.
Running north south.
Lehman, here.
No.
Holden. Here. Dawson. Dawson, here.
Here.
Morgan.
Yeah, here.
Richardson.
Here.
Cross. Foster. One. Here.
Did the minutes?
Yeah, it wasn't, we haven't had a, uh.
Motion through the minutes. All in favor? I. Close.
Okay, uh, first on the agenda for the close door, sir, I've got, um, Mr. Fisher would, uh, like to give a presentation and and, uh, and just really have a discussion at at this point. So, um, I'll just turn the floor over to him, but, um, we'll we'll jump in, go back to him.
Everybody, Joe Fisher, Fisher. Joe Fisher.
Okay. I'm Joe Fisher. I've, uh, always been a concrete and four, this is in town. Uh, we bring some problems, work different places and, uh, help them in. This is the residential project that I'm doing with the first people here in this city. I just want. And this is really just a very brief overview of what we hope to do. Bring every speed to what we would like to, we'd like to accomplish, uh, in the long term and, uh, ask for the city's support going forward. Um, this is the residential development. It's two hundred and seven acres southwest of town. Uh, we offer Sacagawea, uh, where Sacagawea and Palmer Road exit from here. Uh, I own, which is state is there. Uh, that's part of the land that we have used to to do this development. Um, it's in the planned community, in a county that doesn't have much plan, unfortunately. But obviously, there's some going forward that we're working on. Um, and we hope to leave at some point in time the new southwest corner of the city of Savannah. Uh, right now, we will not be contiguous to the city. Um, as developer, uh, lift the costs, and we certainly build a development, nice development. It's a lot less than it's gonna take to build, since that, you know, that's the right thing to do. Uh, we hope to bring, uh, we basically develop a traffic facilitator. Um, is this actually explained? Did we?
Yeah, there's a laser pointer on that. You can point to that screen. Is it still put on?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we we, the the red outline here is just the development. This is the corner of Palmer and Sacagawea. So we hope to start a collector road at this point in time, ninety feet. And eventually, we'll come north, across the trail, across Thirty-second Street, across Henry Land, uh, the daughter's property, and to the roundabout at Sixteenth Street. That's two miles of road, um, and so it's something to just go build and then hope works as a network, just hold that road. So we would, we're hoping to do, as you can hear, and and these, uh, well, this is sort of the development that will be two different phases of of a residential project. On the left, on the west side is, uh, ninety by one fifty lots. On the east side, one fifty by one fifty. And, um, we hope to have city sewer, city water. Um, we really understand the importance of sidewalks, walking community. We're located, well-located right here. Uh, this is, uh, Cloverdale Park. Uh, the high school is here. I hope to get, and I talked to Brendan about that option, uh, to look for grand monies to build a trail from the high school to the property and up to the, up to the K Trail. Uh, making it just leisure friendly, walk-in friendly, uh, family friendly. A lot of developments on the west side of Savannah, even to this day, does not have sidewalks. It's changed, you can't walk on the street. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do that in hours. Of course, the development will be in four phases. Uh, we have total of a hundred and ten lots, um, or discs, which will be there. Um, and then, um, in the future, we can do, um, more of the kind of townhomes, garden homes, condominiums, apartments, uh, to get, to build a development. Um, we're gonna build this in construction with city specifications. Um, and so we'd like to get city services, uh, with sewer and water. Um, the collector road will be forty-two feet wide. Again, it's also city specs, the feeder road is a thirty-one. So there's no snow, it's, 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 uh, for, for the development. To build the collector street and bring sewer and water to this, which we're in it currently, um, we have options of water, pretty much, pretty much right, but it should be, I believe, anyway. The stop here for the city on Thirty-second Street, and the town west, and there's a south. This is, this is the only part of this, you're all, all, uh, park, and then the land, uh, intersection. Um, we'd love to see, let me get that verse just a moment. There's a roundabout at Sixteenth Street, we'd love to see a roundabout here at Third Tech Street, a roundabout here at Palmer, another roundabout here at some point in time, uh, on D Highway. And I think we can convince the state, county, hopefully, uh, to, that it's in our interest to do that, to have that traffic facility, get cars off of sixty-five or fifty and, uh, and around this side down that way. Um, the cost to to do the the thousand feet, the nine fifty feet of collector road, the sewer and and the water is in the name of seven to eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, that's just, that's the thing we could give in to build the roads and then the sewer, the water, so we could get a thousand bucks, so. It's not an insignificant number. Um, in terms of where we go, this is for the water option. Um, there'd be a sixteen inch, I think. It'd be a twelve inch water line that's down, that's down to the surface of the, of the development. And then we could do the next slide. There's, there's an option to sewer that I think that we should look at, um.
Yeah.
And it's actually, we, we would drive, we have to do this.
Oh, I think I'm all the way to the bottom here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Now, that, this would be an option, where we would first, um, you know, um, just, can we go back to the?
To the last one?
We're local, you know, that, that would be fine. This would be an option that would would have a lift station here that would go straight east and, uh, to the lift station at the high school. Um, another option, which would be previous, why, would have, where the sewer could go from, you know, lift station, this would be gravity bed, pardon me. Gravity bed down, this is where the, where the people fall west. To here to the lift station, that would then come back up to the high school lift station. And that, that would serve to bring, uh, hack areas, the house on B Highway, some others, uh, in the future on Sacagawea, part of the development, um, and, and able to open them into the city's services, um. And then if, if we can't get just down here, come across because of reasons or, 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 I would think the people on those roads would like to have city sewer, or city set it. We can lift from here back west, north, to here, and then gravity feed to this lift station up on Thirty-second Street. So we can get to that place. That north route is about ninety-five hundred feet. The southwest route is about eight thousand feet, and the east, a part of South East Route, uh, the, uh, eight thousand feet, and then the due, the east is about five thousand feet, so it's pretty, the, the cost, uh, whatever makes sense, uh, is what we, you know, what's the, what is, what is, what is, kind of. Um, that's pretty much it, I guess. I, I love for the city, I know, I talked to Charles about, this is, this is the future, obviously. Uh, I may not get to drive on the road to go down to Sixteenth Street or down the roundabout, but we have to plan ahead of that. I hope I do, um, but it's the right thing to do for the city, for the community, for, for, certainly. I'd love for the city to consider that portion of it, that is to bring services to their, to its society, uh, perhaps sharing that, uh, with us. Um, we can, as a developer, and, and our cost will be lower than what the cities would have, they, they built. So the city will be all this tall. And, uh, I mean, uh, so you can just, uh, expand the footprint, uh, for the long term, and, uh, it's all right. And planning construction, um, so the, the key, we exploit the nine inch weird and then put it with the D R, uh, and then, and start the construction, and pay for it all the time.
Did you mention how far out?
Yeah, actually.
Future, but how far?
It is, uh, from the city limits right now to the southwest corner of, uh, uh.
On the, in the timeline.
Oh, timeline, sorry. Oh, in the city. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I hope I see it, that, uh, it's gonna help the city develops and grows up to to this. If they can bring sewer and water down D Highway, um, or, at the lift station, and if that could be incorporated into it, uh, what you just noted on is not that far from where we are.
Yeah, actually, I think it's on the map there in the.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. That whole kind of.
So what we, we had a meeting with Mr. Fisher, and we were discussing, how do we make the contingent which do the city of Savannah, we, you know, we went around it, and we realized it's not gonna be an easy thing to do. But, you know, I think this is obviously a great future of development for city of Savannah.
Thank you. I think that the Henry Land's property, excuse me, that the Henry Land's property develops, which I certainly, I certainly believe in, uh, and with the, that's that is city park, we might give development as quickly as possible, certainly, in active balance.
Yeah, and it helps fix, uh, Thirty-second Street there too, right at, uh, right at Cloverdale. Those S-curves are really very narrow and dangerous, and so, you know, fixing that would be very, uh, heaven's part, very desirable. Uh, as you can see, kind of the, the, uh, the high school there is kind of a peninsula, so if we can kind of fill in that whole section there, then, uh, then it makes sense. And the, the one that goes across to the east, we looked at that as far as the property owners along that area could hook on to that, so it would be bring us more rate payers as well as, uh, it's, it's just about. So it's, it's intriguing on a couple of levels, uh, you know, and so we wanted to, to, um, bring it to you and at least plant a seed to to think about it and and.
Mr. Fisher has a vision of not only residential, but commercial.
Yeah.
Retail development.
We have four ways to do the sell. Uh, by the time we're in Sacagawea, it'll be commercial, just one time, for us, more.
Yeah, by the time you get that many houses around in that area, you know, a gas station would be, or a convenience store, or something along those lines would make a whole lot of sense after, so.
You have a future?
Have you had any, any study of the cost of it?
Only in that I have done, gone to a couple of the contractors and costed it out, and then, uh, I. Only in the, I have done, gone to the public and contractors and cost them it out, and then, uh, I.